Yeah, we're on the record, go ahead.
Great. Good evening and welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
In there.
The Evening Miss Willis meeting of the Township Montclair Planning Board. In accordance with New Jersey statute, as everybody knows, this meeting is provided by posting a copy of the notice on the first floor of the municipal building and by sending a copy to local paper. This meeting is being recorded for future broadcasts on Channel thirty-four and will be available on demand on YouTube. Since we're in a different room, fire exits are to my right, presumably also behind me. If there's any sort of emergency, use the stairs, please. Go home.
Chair Willis is not here. Vice Chair Brodak.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Councilor Schlecker is excused. Miss Willis?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy is excused. Mr. Ian Wally?
Here.
Ms. Slotman? Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. Gilmer?
Here.
Okay.
So of course you do not need to have to roll and push anybody for to speak, but it's being recorded live and video as well.
I think we should let the record show there are no members of the public here.
Says we can hack that. No. So first up, we have approval of the minutes from November fourth of this year.
I received the revisions from Vice Chair Brodak and Ms. Slotman. Are there any other changes to the minutes?
Motion to accept. What changes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions.
Next up, we have the resolution for application two-six-one-zero, Platteon Interiors, Ninety-sixth High Street.
I saw Keith had a comment about on page three, and Peter Speck, in his testimony, referred to the nineteen eighty-seven master plan. Because I think that he was involved in that plan. In his mind, that is the most recent version of the master plan that addresses residential land use.
Well, only plan because he was.
Well, and I actually agree that the eighty-seven master plan does address the residential areas. But the way it's written, it says that which is described that the nineteen eighty-seven master plan did not look at residential areas. And I think what he testified to him is that our recent land use and circulation element did not look at residential areas and instead kind of deferred back to that nineteen eighty-seven master plan.
You should say devaluated. The nineteen eighty-seven master plan devaluated the residential areas or considered.
Sure. That would be fine with me. I just want to make sure my understanding, recollection was correct.
Do you value it relative to the law?
I think evaluated in general. If I remember the recent land use circulation element, it said specifically at the very beginning, this element did not consider any of the residential areas, but mainly focused on, focused exclusively on residential areas. Any other changes to the resolution? Move to accept it with the changes presented. Prove.
Seven. Oh, okay. Second was from Tony. Second is all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions.
Extension.
Next up is the resolution for application two-six-three-four, Brafton Inns, one-fourteen, one-sixteen, Walnut Street.
Yeah.
Line up Keith's shed.
Evening, sons.
So on page four, Tony had made the note about the need to look at the building department to make sure that, you know, structural integrity, et cetera, which I think is addressed on page four, item three, the actual items. One question I had, it's, you could say building permit. Right, right, yeah. Specifically build permits, you know, building department, so.
Yeah.
Lot of things, right? And then at the end, it says it shall be subject to review and approval by the board engineer. Maybe it's covered if we made it the building department, but we were trying to make sure that this review was actually done by the building department.
Yes, I don't know if that's what. If you shed over a hundred feet square feet, it's got to have this certain foundation, that there's some requirements.
And it may not be, maybe not.
It probably doesn't. So someone, I think the board engineer, see, what this should say is that they still have to work with the office.
Yeah.
That's basically it. So I think that this is the teeth, and I think having the board engineer review, just take another look at it, make sure that everything is okay, that it not down and built correctly. We didn't agree that they could keep a crap shed, sorry, you know, a non-conforming shed from a construction standpoint.
Well, once the building department was given a building permit.
Well, then this. Well, but they still have their zoning. We think they have their zoning. We said it can stay there, they just need to rebuild it.
Right.
It's a building.
Right, okay.
That's unfair, but that was the whole point that Tony raised. It was, to me, very clear that that's exactly what we had communicated.
Hold on a second. I'm a little confused. Are we saying they have to get a building permit now?
Yeah.
Which everybody normally has to do when you put a shed over.
Of this side, yes.
And are there requirements? Are there construction requirements? Sure, with said shed?
Sure, construction requirements, structural, absolutely. That's why if you have something small, the idea is that you go home, you go and block one down.
Right.
But when they get to be over ten by fifteen, it's got to be.
It's ten by ten, not even smaller.
Oh, yeah, might be something like that.
So there's, in the, in the building code, there's step up. One, you don't need a foundation.
Two, it needs to be secure and might be tested with footing.
So there's other requirements. There's requirements, there's language for the construction, the standards of the shed.
Is that not clear?
Yeah, that's fine.
My only question was if we acquire a building permit, is that enough to?
Well, I have this, I have suburban, just to take a look at and make sure. He knows, what's the fellow's name from suburban?
Yeah.
He knows, he knows what we're after.
Right. What we were after was to block it from a visual standpoint, not just.
But we came to that.
Well, that's not, you were interested in the soundness of the structure.
No, we came to that.
If she said, I can't put it in anyplace else, which is nuts, she could have it someplace else, but we said whatever, you know, and then to screen it, but we did say, I mean, she had a, she had a obligation to get a building permit. She wrote the law, she put something up without getting the permit, so we tell her, go get the permit, but it can stay where it is. Normally, if you're going to build a permit, we'll do two things. We'll do the zoning, it can't be the front yard, the side yard, whatever.
We effectively approved the zone.
And they make sure that you.
But so she's, she's the tear it now, and she has the right to build a new one?
In the same spot.
In the same spot because we issued the zoning.
Right.
Which is the best of the hardship that's been.
We effectively approved the zoning variance in that location.
Right.
Then we also, but at the same time, we're now requiring the building standards to be enforced. Okay, now, but we also, in the resolution, have some standards for screening
Right.
in that location, which the engineer, our engineer, not the building department, should be the one to review that or Janice or however you want to. It's supposed to go two car, if I remember correctly, it's two cars.
Long, right.
Two, two car spots further west.
Is that in the resolution? How that long is great.
I don't think there's no road.
Either, is it ultimately going to go to the township because it was in the right of way?
Well, you can plant there. You can, we can plant in the right of way because there's no place else to do it.
Yeah, you can plant in the right of way, so.
I think it's meant to get township approval to plant in the right of way. Is that in here?
Yeah, that became an issue. Let's clarify that.
I thought that you didn't need permission to plant in the right of way.
I think to plant trees in the right of way, you can plant hedges in the right of way all the time.
No, you're just saying that the township has to plant, put the plantings, that the township has to do it.
No.
I thought the applicant said that she would earmark, put it down.
Right, because she can't plant them in the right of way, but she could earmark, put it down, plant in the right of way.
Well.
There's a way that, no, I'm just saying the way that four is worded.
I think, I think that's not correct. I think you're allowed to plant hedges and greenery type plantings in the right of way. You can't put trees in.
But the purpose of this blocking was to have these plants grow.
Right.
So that ultimately it blocked the whole side of.
Right, so we were talking about tall plantings.
Right. So then it becomes a question of whether or not the applicant would have the right to plant in the, with the notion that it was going to grow that way.
So why don't we just say the applicant shall plant screening greenery in the, in the grassy area space, which is the public right of way, providing, provided permission is granted by the township if required.
I think we should let nobody require.
Then we can't, then we have to check that, we can't pass it tonight.
So we're giving the township an alternative method to screen it? They can just change their mind, or this stuff, we don't need to.
Yeah, I think rather than.
Let the tenant shall approve the township's actual alternative approach to screen the township's condition, in which ways the applicant shall apply that alternative approach. So that's out of what happens, goes back to the township. So you might decide to put up another pay test or something.
No, no, it's basically, it should say it's green, a green planting alternative. It was if the township wanted to plant trees instead of the, of the applicant.
Oh, the other provider.
Yeah, exactly.
Or it's right, there's a fence right in front, they could plant nine on one fence.
Yeah, that wouldn't go high enough, that's enough.
Five fence, well, it's only about five.
Yes, five.
How about if we do this, let's, let's turn this down and maybe get it real clear. Basically, the end has to be, we want plants. So you're working out with the lawyer, right? We want plants, otherwise this is not. We do not want to enter into a situation where a year later, it was not screened. So whatever has to happen to be assured, because that was the deal.
Well, we can go back to the tape. I mean, that's the thing, we can go back to the recording and see exactly what was agreed to. Or Mr. Neese can research exactly what planting regulations are.
We want to have them, them make, do the plantings, and they are responsible for maintaining it. This kind of absolves them from that requirement.
Yeah, it puts it off, yeah.
Well, the only real question right here is.
With the permission of the township.
Does the township, can the township approve planting in the right of way? I don't think that's the case. I mean, I know plenty of properties, I think people my own, because the property line is back off the sidewalk, where there are hedges there, they've been there for a hundred years. So plenty of people plant hedge in the public right of way, back off the sidewalk, in the grassy area off the sidewalk. So.
But I think there's also requirements for how tall those can be.
Well, I also, at this, at this location, usually you're most concerned with site distance.
Right.
This is not, there's no issue about site distance with this location.
The requirement in there is about corner, a height.
Well, there's one height for corners, and then there's another height for everything else. I live on a corner.
Yeah, corner, it can only be.
Four feet or two feet.
But fences.
And fences.
That is interesting.
Recyclable. I mean, it seems like rather than debate it here, maybe we should defer this to the next meeting.
Yeah, because if the hedge has a, if the greenery hedge has a height limit, but the trees don't, that's, then we want to. The town doesn't enforce the hedge height except at the corner.
How about if you do this, get them to do a planting plan, and get the building department to approve it, and then the.
Building department, I have to get the engineering department, but yes.
Or who is someone from the township to approve it, and they go build it.
There's no township right now.
Well, it's mainly a.
And that is clear, the, the resolution can come in with a plan.
There is a, there is an interview with the department, they'll sign off on things, but it usually takes quite a while to do it.
I'm saying, no official township, official year.
We just call mainly associates, it's the township engineer.
Yeah. But you don't say, do you?
So let me just make sure I understand. You want them to plant something like.
I think the board expressed, in order to do this, the board said, screen it. So we just want to screen it, so, and this is a little.
So they're strictly required to plant, provided the plantings are agreeable to the township.
Well, I don't care about the township, it wants your agreement with the board.
I think in, I'm trying not to comment on this resolution because I voted no, but I, my recollection was that we would go to the town, if the town said absolutely not, you can't put a thing in there, that was it.
But I think.
That's my collection.
I think that's true.
But again, I would like to check the tape.
And does it interfere with the sidewalk?
Whatever the reason was, we don't like it, it interferes, it has, you know, slight issues.
If the township says okay, then they're required to plant and maintain it.
Yes.
That's the resolution.
The applicant.
Yes, because I, what I don't think is, is going to work is having the township do the planting at that location.
So then.
That's problematic. They should do the planting.
That wasn't the intention.
But get approval for that from the engineer.
And note, Mr. One is drawing.
If he can do it, what they can only do is bring it to my department, and then I can separate it three, if necessary, four groups.
Do you want a full-blown or even a partial planting plan? Do you want a plant or something?
I do. I want a full-blown planting plan that I can now take over the community services and say, this is best proposed. Do you agree? Will you sign off on it?
And if they say no.
Let's come back to this original point. Is there an ordinance that says you can't plant in the public right of way? Or is there anything that impacts that? We don't know. We don't, we, we kind of didn't follow on.
That would be up to the engineering department.
That's right.
Well, that's definitely, now we talk, now we talk to put enforcement, there's enforcement, they're the ones who are enforcing those property maintenance codes, things like cutting grass, cutting your hedges.
Let's table this for another couple of minutes. We could look at the E-code right now and see if, you know.
It sounds like we're already coming back. I mean, we can do that, but it sounds like we're not going to resolve this.
We work, we should.
So let's just do this.
Let's have Mr. Neese just have it and research the law and then.
Sure.
But the screening, apart from the E-code and part of this, there are no after that one. Sure, comes. The one, there was the one last thing, so it's page four, item three and four, they need to be.
Correct.
I think other than that, there's nothing else. I just want to work on those and then come back and then.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I think it's just those, right? Everyone's arguing with that. The only provisions are three and four, the conditions paragraph, of the condition portion of the resolution that are going to be.
Mr. Neese, I have a question related to resolutions. So if you vote no on the application, can you still participate in your resolution?
No.
Sure. You can.
Like what's a poster? Where are you going to vote on it?
Do you vote on it?
But that was the.
It's an act of the board. Memorialization is an act of the board, and even though you voted no on the original application, you're voting on whether or not the resolution should be taken.
It's a different, whether it's accurate.
Whether it's accurate.
Basic. I'll check that.
And if you vote, if you abstain from voting on an application, that's as good as a no vote?
As good as a no vote.
And why would you abstain?
One hundred twelve.
You're not required to say.
Yeah, one hundred twelve, that's the heights. Height.
I'm sure you can imagine.
Why did you say third reasons?
Step from those two, then it's to the heights, it's better. And one hundred dash twelve. Just don't make that happen. The other one is about how close to the twenty-five feet of the intersection.
No vote was, well, I mean, I.
Ten feet of any roadway.
But that you need a certain number of yes votes, in fact, you don't have enough yes votes.
On the original application.
No, you're saying that, you said that.
One hundred, one hundred twelve.
The same as a no.
That's the equivalent.
It has a, it couldn't like impact because you didn't get enough yes votes.
It doesn't talk about height. If you, if you have three yes votes and two no votes and abstention, that passes.
And this is.
It's interesting.
Within twenty-five.
Three yes, two no's, and three abstentions.
That's the. Yeah, and so, so there doesn't seem to be any height.
Ah ha.
Because that's what you're.
That's it.
In the majority that are voting.
Yeah, yeah.
More, I'll, I'll get back to.
That's what I was at.
That's our science test every day.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a homework to do.
Yeah, that's two.
Yeah, I guess I really just don't understand.
We're closing that.
The effect of abstention was in the memorial.
Notice, hedge.
I thought it allowed me to not vote no on the application, but well, not now. You abstain of an application, still allow me to participate in any content.
Just trimming, doesn't say height and any discussion.
Any discussion.
After the vote.
After the discussion.
Because I tried to remind us of the public right of way.
And it does, and I, well, I could do that anyway.
The E-code. That's where you get all the requirements. But for voting, which for, in a search of motion, so you try it, I know. I hear the same. On the actual resolution. E-code three sixty, if you abstain, if you voted no.
It's, it's the online version of the township ordinance.
Resolution. I think, I think you can, but I will, because normally you have to vote.
There's nothing.
Entertaining the vote, a place to.
That's what I learned.
Go get four, so now you can.
I think it's because of rubber, right? So it has to be, it says it has to be trimmed, if they tell you.
No.
So they, I've had this issue. My hedges grew too much onto the sidewalks. They sent me a warning notice. Trim your hedges.
This is the resolution. Is that for one?
Basically, that's it. But, but the idea is trim it.
But you're editing the resolution.
But not about the height, so you can plant twenty-foot.
No, but Janice, see, maybe.
So maybe we just need to.
We need to.
Yeah.
All right, so we, we, Janice and I have done some research here. Go ahead, Janice.
There's no height limitation to anything in the right, you know, in the right of way.
Okay.
It's just the site triangles.
Okay.
But also, I think we should still carry it to the next meeting.
Okay, and give me an opportunity to agree to our heading, to talk without, and see, Richard, you know, that's his understanding as well. Bear in mind, folks, that we are limited to the discussion that was had during the course of the resolution.
Right.
But it appears that no, from this quick look, it appears no public, no approval is needed for planting in the public right of way, and that may well be.
But there was a discussion about the role of the township in this matter. There were questions.
In the middle of the discussion.
That is, so that, so that is. But if township approval is needed, if township approval was needed, and it just appears no approval is needed, just to let you know. So that was if approval was needed, then the township would say, okay, we'll plant trees there instead. But it appears no, no township approved to plant hedge or other greenery in the public right of way is required, and/or there is no height requirement for that. So you have twenty-feet-high material, green material in there. But then the only thing that that impacts is sightlines for the road.
Regardless of whether they, not to be a dead horse.
Yeah.
But regardless of whether there is an explicit ordinance that says that the town has to authorize something in the public right of way, it's the township's property. If township doesn't want something there, it has the right to say no, just like any other property owner. And so you want to make sure that the town is in agreement with whatever those.
Still the engineering department or company.
Yeah, it's both. They submit the plan, and we look at the sign off.
Okay. So when this, we're just having a discussion, is there a sightline issue when you're coming out of a driveway? That hedges, hedges have, is it similar to?
Yeah, going on roadway. It's not official, but when, I mean, we, you do have to be able to see when you're exiting a driveway.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be a sightline issue with this property.
No, I'm not, just in general, since we're talking about.
Resilience.
Yeah, if it's logical, you wouldn't have.
Preservation public service.
Yeah, it's not, it's not always perfect, like at the end of the street, at the end of where Bullardale meets Lincoln Street. The road curves and parking is allowed both sides of the street, but if somebody's parked in that space that's closest to the curb, you can't see traffic.
It's coming out.
That's coming out. It's, it's a, it's a crapshoot getting a, all the interception. You know, those kinds of things that I see town all the time, it's in many towns, in many places where you have a parking curb. It's really not considered, you know, when they're evaluating sightlines.
So, so here, just to be clear, that's, it's very clear. If the planting is within ten feet of a roadway or twenty-five feet of an intersection, they can, for the purposes of public safety, tell you to bring it down to two and a half feet. That doesn't mean you have to, but somebody comes and looks and says, ah, that's a problem, you know, you should cut, you need to cut it down. They can tell you that. They have flexibility to tell you to bring it down, but that's not the issue here because we've got plenty of space before they come out of the driveway. So you're right, it should go to the township for blessing.
When they submit for a building permit, have them include the shrubbery on that plan as well, all at once. They'll have to submit a sketch of the shed to the bill for building permit, start with that, and just show some shrubs that are doing it. And someone will have to interview and say, don't worry about zoning because the planning board issued a resolution to accept this for zoning. And then it's pretty easy, and the trade is that we agree to leave it there if we're screened. And it would be hard pressed for anyone in the town to disagree with that. If they do disagree, then we've got a problem. It was not properly treated, right? That was, that was a trade that we had that night.
Yeah.
So I don't think that they should look at screening the shed in isolation, they should look at it as a part of this decision.
Correct.
So it should be a no break, it should.
Unless there's some traffic-related issue, which is. Yeah.
But then, then maybe, should then, if there's a traffic thing, since we said it, the shed staying, maybe the shed can't stay.
Made it a condition.
Made it a condition.
In the discussion.
So if it can't be screened, then move. I don't see why they're in that spot, why they would have a problem with the height of the screening.
Because I don't, I don't think that was always discussed, because if the screening doesn't go up, they have to move the shed.
Well, it was discussed, but both were approved. It would say, and there was.
I think specifically the discussion was, you would go to the township and ask them, can we plant something here? If they said no, then that's it. You can do plantings. That was my, again, my recollection, that's what we asked Mr. Neese to go back and look at the recording.
I thought that we, that's how it's ordered, the way it is.
I thought it was.
Right, because we could or we can't require them to plant in the public right of way unless the township.
Right.
Agreed to. Nor can we require the township to agree to something like that.
Right.
So it's a condition on the.
No, 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 I think what you said is not, we can require them to plant in the public right of way. If the.
If approved by the township.
No, the township doesn't approve, that's my point. The township does not approve.
Township owns the property, so the township can control what's on its property. There's not a specific ordinance that says that because you don't need it, they're the property owner.
I'm not, again, I don't like that, Mr. Neese.
But I think.
So we don't, debating it.
It is the property. It doesn't have to be in an ordinance, it is the property of the township.
Okay.
And the township can come around.
Owned by the.
Whatever's handy, cut it right down, you know.
They can do whatever they want.
Whatever they want.
It's their property.
So we've had a fifteen, so since I've been here, we've had a fifteen-minute discussion on this. Have we reached a conclusion? Or to look at.
Wow. I've been trying to. So the next up is application two-six, the resolution on application two-six-four-zero, one-twenty, Valid Road, LLC. So the next up is application two six, the resolution on application two six four zero, one twenty Valley Road LLC, located one twenty Valley Road. Were there any provisions?
Now we move to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, extensions?
Next up, uh, new business is the twenty twenty meeting calendar.
Uh, it may, it all makes sense, like see how your voting policies and all that.
Right.
I had a couple of questions.
Okay, I have a question to just.
Yeah.
Kids, right, I thought August twenty-fourth.
Actual suspects. Yeah. Well, it's, it's, I, I did want to bring up August twenty-fourth. I know there was some discussion earlier this year with the last meeting in August of whether we should have it or not. Cause there were some, uh, some people saw were critical applications on that night and there was concerns that maybe the public or two members before, myself, could not be there. So I wanted to, but we had already noticed it and we couldn't not have a meeting that night.
Yeah, Janice made a great point that you voted on these dates.
Exactly, so now is the time, if we feel as a board that we should not have a meeting at the very end of August for whatever reasons, now would be the time to take it off the calendar.
I wouldn't say take it off, I would say just as you do have control over it, just not schedule something like today's meeting, something that's not involved in the public or that's not as, you know, meeting.
And it's really difficult to do, cause if an, if an applicant sees that we have a date scheduled, oh, I'm gonna carry my application, it doesn't such date, and we're hard pressed to say no on that date, I can't.
That's a, that's a workshop.
Well, why don't we just take it off and put it on?
Just special meeting.
Better, I, I think it'd be easier to take it off, so I'm not making that, I mean, that word play.
Do we have to have a certain number of meetings in here?
No.
Oh, we used to only have twelve.
No.
Look at those days.
No, I don't, I can't, I can't remember those days.
I was, I was on the board.
Ever. Okay, and then I know April thirteenth, school is closed. I, I, last year I might have been the only person affected by that and not anybody else.
I was as well.
Is it possible?
Yes, it is. Is it possible to make that the sixth, cause it's still two weeks after the twenty-third, but I don't know if the sixth is some other.
It doesn't pop up as any holiday on my calendar, so we can do it the sixth.
Is there some other meeting there?
No, Monday nights are usually reserved for Monday. We're okay, we keep it to a Monday.
Okay.
You can try to change it to a different day of the week.
So you wanna do it April sixth and April twenty-seventh? Yep. And I'll be getting these protocols out, yeah.
Do you want, do we need to move to twenty-seventh, third?
Art.
Doesn't matter. We can watch.
Section three oh one of the E code.
Women's.
I'm thinking that it were twenty-seventh to the twentieth, because, yeah, does that make sense? It's not just.
The way we're doing.
Provides for April six and April twenty-seven. Just scan it. Uh, check, scan the whole thing. You're better rated that than I.
Easter is on the twelfth, okay, so I'm, so I'm doing it the, the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh, we do it the sixth and the twentieth.
Three oh one and eight on one.
Okay, sixth and the twentieth.
So that way, that way we're not meeting two weeks in a row between April and May. Okay. Is our May meeting?
Seven.
Three oh one, seven.
Uh, I see.
Right, yeah.
That makes sense.
Keep it, have it stuck in it.
Yeah.
All right, so April.
April sixth and April twentieth.
Twenty.
And we're going, we're going to look at the.
Thirteen, twenty-five, thirteen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and we're going to April twentieth.
And I noticed that June meetings were shifted back a week.
June fifteenth and twenty-nine.
Yeah, I didn't know if there, it seems like it's not the second of the fourth Mondays.
I don't know why, I think it's almost a month. I don't know why, why it's, the fifteenth and the twenty-nine, we can make that the eighth and the twenty-second. Unless, I mean, twenty-second has round graduation, but.
That I don't need to worry about.
Eighth and the twenty-second?
And then the last one I just.
We talked about moving.
June.
So that's the one to the sixth.
The eighth and the twenty-second.
Eighth and the twenty-seventh.
Which, which now it, with revision, now it's the second of the fourth.
Yeah, because that's June twenty-fourth after school starts, so we don't have to.
Eightth and the twenty-second.
And then the last, the last one I had, I just wanted to bring up for discussion, November twenty-third is the week of Thanksgiving. I don't know if that's an issue for anybody.
It's the week of.
It's the week, it's, it's, the one day before Thanksgiving, not Thursday. It, I'll be around.
Sure.
But I don't know, people normally take the whole week, so I wanted to just bring it up.
They usually don't, but it's just.
We, we, well, November has five Mondays, so we can do the ninth and sixteen, I mean, the second and the sixteenth if you want.
Because the ninth is also looking to Veterans Day, but I don't know.
Can't be Veterans Day, I told my.
It's November eleventh, and I, I thought Veterans Day was always on Monday, but.
It is, but we are always close on Monday. I don't know why.
Veterans Day, it's still.
I have Columbus Day as the twelfth, wait, are we in October?
No, we're gonna go better. I think, I think we'd better do the seventh, the second and the sixteenth.
What's the first week of meeting on October?
Nineteenth.
That is fine.
Yeah, the second and the sixteen.
Okay.
Works much better, because I have a suspicion that, cause Becky's day shouldn't have a Monday.
It says Wednesday, November eleventh.
I know, it says on my calendar too, we're always, we're always close on a Monday with Becky's day.
Was the actual.
Well, the actual day was.
Then they observe it on the Monday?
Yeah, that's right, yeah, so.
The federal holiday will be Wednesday, that's when federal offices will be closed, so I don't know.
I may be wrong, maybe the township does close on a Wednesday, but.
That's it.
All right, so we're settled on November second and sixteen.
Right, April sixth and twenty, June fifteenth and twenty-second.
Correct, and then no August twenty-fourth.
Our board is out.
Very, last one's December twenty-one. Do we usually do, can't remember what.
Christmas is on Friday, December seventh.
Well, see, uh, December's hard because it's only four Wednes, four Mondays. So yeah, seven and twenty-one is it. We can, we can cancel.
Unless you wanna do September fourteen.
It's hard doing it, it's gonna be.
I know, back to back is hard.
It's really hard.
That is not be done for the twentieth this year, so.
What we could do is schedule, schedule it for the fourth and the twenty-first and I'll see if I can cancel the twenty-first if it all has to. We might not be quite as busy.
We said that for a couple of years now. And I remember a time when we had three meetings a month.
Yeah, yeah, that was hard, that was hard.
That was different.
Thank God for lack of one. Took up a lot of air.
Okay, do you need a motion for all these?
I do, I need a motion to adopt the calendar as amended.
That I would move to do that.
The second. All in favor?
Aye.